I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christiansen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Dovis.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Kuza.
Present.
Mr. Workmeister. Seven members present this evening.
Thank you. And we're going to begin the meeting with a presentation by our auditors.
Thank you, board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm Steve Seifer from Seifer &amp; Seifer. We're going to talk about the school district's 15-16 audit for a few minutes. We'll go to page two. We're here because the state and federal government require annual audits of the district's financial statement. The important thing for everyone to keep in mind is that the auditors work for the board and for the public. At the conclusion of all audits, we give an opinion tells you whether the financial statements of the district represent where we were June thirtieth and how we got there. Our opinion this year is unmodified, exactly what the school directors would expect to see. Anything less than that would be pretty catastrophic. We go to page, next page. Our revenues for the general fund come from three places: local, principally property taxes and wage taxes, state revenue, variety of grants and a basic subsidy from the state, and a small amount of federal revenue, five hundred, excuse me, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, for a total of almost eighty-three million dollars for the 15-16 school year. Moving over to the next page, where did we spend the money? Instruction: fifty million, three hundred thousand support, some twenty-one point seven million. Non-instructional services: a million, five seventy. Capital outlay of sixty thousand. And then we have debt service on, the bonds that we have issued for the buildings that we own, and that's almost seven point three million for a total of eighty-one million, seventeen thousand. As a result of those operations, the unassigned fund balance, and that is fund balance not pledged for any purpose, increased by seventy-one thousand. One of the other major expenditures is the board recognized an obligation and a need to put money aside for future capital projects. All of the buildings that we have, despite the newness of some of them, need regular ongoing maintenance, and this type of funding of million seven sixty-two is set aside for that purpose. We'll go to the next page there. History is a good teacher, and we're here to learn. And what you can see, this is the unassigned fund balance of the general fund. It's very steady, goes up a little bit, goes down a little bit. It stands in in a range which we consider appropriate for a district this size, and that is anywhere between five and eight percent of the current year's expenditures. And at the end of 2016, there was some five point four million dollars in that fund balance. You can equate this to money that you have at home, your six months of expenditures that we're all supposed to have. Some of us find it easy to do that, some of us find it more difficult, but it's no different here for your school district than it would be for what you do at home. Challenges: these nine people elected by the public have a variety of challenges to contend with. The first of which we'll mention, healthcare. It's been a bit of a turmoil right now. The rates are expected to increase. Unknowns regarding Pennsylvania senate's actions, maybe they'll replace the property tax, maybe they won't. We have a lot of unknowns when it comes to state funding decreases. We don't know if that's going to happen or if it will. Federal government similarly. Our retirement plan for teachers is in a quandary. It's substantially underfunded. We're looking at a couple million dollars worth of increase over the next five years. Currently about thirty percent of every payroll dollar is for retirement costs. It's expected to increase upward to thirty-six percent. What we will do is show you one of the major reserves on the next page. School boards are required to do their job to the best that they can anticipating obligations that they know are coming. To that end, we have some five point, excuse me, seven point four million dollars set aside for renovations and other unforeseen issues. It's a good job on the part of the Bethel Park School Board to be doing that. We think that that's an appropriate amount, might need to be higher in the future. We go to the very last page. We mentioned those retirement costs. You can see a graph here, and while it looks like it's leveling off, those new indicators pointing to the fact that it might even be higher than these numbers currently show. Lastly, members of the board, thanks. We appreciate the opportunity to be your auditor. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but thank you all very much.
Thank you. It was approximately this time last year that we welcomed the Bethel Park High School Varsity Competitive Spirit Squad and their coaches to our meeting to recognize them for winning national and world titles. And we are pleased to welcome them back again to recognize another important milestone in the squad's history. This year, the girls set a goal of earning a state championship, and we are pleased that through hard work and determination, they were able to add a state championship to their resume, winning the Pennsylvania Competitive Spirit Championship in the Small Varsity Division. Not satisfied with their national and world championship routine from last year, the squad was determined to ratchet up the difficulty and tumbling aspects of their routine, and their efforts paid off. The girls had a great state championship, earning a score in the preliminary round that was high enough to automatically put them in the finals, bypassing the semifinals. In the finals, they defeated perennial cheerleading powerhouses Pine Ridge Land, Hampton, Butler, and Upper Darby. The girls earned the right to compete at states by finishing among the top four at the Whipple Championships. And while they weren't able to repeat their national and world championships this year, they finished in a respectable third place at the national championships. In addition to their competitions, the girls also support our high school athletic teams cheering at their games, as well as doing community service supporting the Special Olympics. At this time, it is my honor and pleasure to present certificates of recognition to our cheerleaders and their coaches, and to congratulate them for earning a state championship and bringing positive recognition to Bethel Park. And we also have Allegheny Councilwoman Sue Means here with us this evening, and she's going to be presenting along with me a special recognition from the county to our cheerleaders. So will our head coach join us at the podium to assist us with this presentation? And thank you for joining us this evening so we could publicly recognize you. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words before we continue?
Oh, yeah, I would. Thank you so much. Again. Is this on?
It's on.
I just want to say congratulations. Today's the day to celebrate, give thanks, and reflect upon everyone that helped you. You think about it, you did it as a team, you have your teammates to thank, you have your parents to thank that drove you endless, the endless practices and took you to competition. You also have people to thank, like your doctor, your chiropractor, your physical therapist. And today, I'd like you to think about, maybe there was some person that tonight you might send a thank you note to, that person that really encouraged you when you wanted to quit. Maybe, maybe none of you were there, but I know as an athlete, sometimes I wanted to quit too. Got too hard, or I was discouraged, and someone came along and encouraged me. And I also want you to reach high, and through your hard work, you can achieve anything. And I wanted to inspire you by telling you that my dear friend, Judge Patty McCullough, who's a Commonwealth Court judge, was a Bethel Park High School cheerleader. So I'm expecting great things from you in the future. And I'm honored to be here today, and I'd like to read this certificate of achievement. This is, this, of the Office of Allegheny County Council's certificate of achievement is awarded to the Bethel Park High School 2016 through 2017 varsity competitive cheerleading team. This certificate of achievement is awarded to the 2016-2017 Bethel Park High School competitive cheerleading team in recognition of winning the 2017 PIAA state cheerleading competition in the Small Varsity Division on January 21st, 2017, in Hershey, Pennsylvania. We commend and recognize each cheerleader and coach whose determination and resolve led to this achievement. The team has set a positive example of excellence for all Allegheny County, continuing evidence that this is the county of champions. This achievement is conferred honor on this county, and this achievement in which the entire community can be proud. Sponsored today by myself, Councilwoman Sue Means, on behalf of the entire Allegheny County Council and the citizens of Allegheny County, this is 28th day of February 2017.
Thank you. Are there Coach Christina's not here? They're at the basketball game, and the girls just won, so that's awesome. Sorry. They won, and they're going to play at Peterson on Saturday.
Alyssa Arnold, she couldn't be with us tonight. Aaron Brown. Riley Evans. Tessa Guarino. Ashlyn Lutton, she couldn't be here with us tonight. Tori Magnati. Gabrielle Miller. Taylor Morissette. Maddie O'Taviano. Camry Peters. Kelsey Quinn. Riley Rusak. Kelly Sheltman. Jamie Skelton. Haley Vincent. And Angela Vorco.
And over there, Coach with them for a picture. Good job.
Thank you.
Good to see you too. It's always great to start a meeting off like that. That's wonderful. And to tell you again, the girls' basketball team won, so they're going to the finals at the Peterson on Saturday. Thank you. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That carries seven to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 24th, 2017.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held February 21st, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and February 28th, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, Ms. O'Rourke.
I'm extremely pleased to be able to share a variety of good news with you this month. The Bethel Park Community Foundation recently awarded three grants to the Bethel Park School District. First, the foundation awarded three hundred and fifty dollars to Memorial Librarian Kathy Okowski for the purchase of STEAM-related materials for the new Makerspace area she created in the library this school year. The other two grants went to the Bethel Park High School DECA group. The first grant was for a two hundred and fifty dollar silver level sponsor for the DECA t-shirts, which will feature the foundation's logo along with other community businesses and organizations. The second grant was a three hundred and fifty dollar educational grant to foster the continued partnership between the foundation and DECA, which began last school year. The grant will help the DECA students to continue to work with the community foundation to help them communicate what they do and to increase community awareness for the foundation. Thank you, Bethel Park Community Foundation, for your generous support. In other grant news, Franklin Principal Theresa Dumont and community member Diane Ford wrote a successful grant application to receive an eight hundred and fifty dollar farm-to-school mini-grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Agriculture. The grants are designed to provide students with access to fresh, healthy food that is locally sourced. The grant will partner Franklin students with a fourth consecutive year with the Samuel and Anna Mae Richardson Bethel Park Community Garden, with the Franklin students planting seeds, growing plants, planting them in the garden, helping to tend the garden over the summer, and enjoying fresh vegetables from the garden through some taste-testing events, as well as salad offerings from the Franklin Cafeteria in the fall. Franklin was one of thirty Pennsylvania schools to receive this grant. This year, sixteen Bethel Park High School students, who are members of the Stand Group, presented the school's third annual African-American read-in featuring songs, poems, speeches, and excerpts from famous African-American authors. This year's read-in is also included a play about Rosa Parks, thanks to English teacher Charles Youngs and nurse Tracy Ford for coordinating this event. Three Bethel Park High School students earned one first place and two second-place awards at the local Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Competition. Jessica Vayman earned a first place and several cash awards for her project, Geo-Polymers Concrete: The New Standard, and will take this project to the state PJAS in May at Penn State, earning second-place awards where students Arhat Pradam and Grayden Tomacwet Tomcowitz. Congratulations to all of these students, and good luck to Jessica at the state PJAS competition. Twenty-six Bethel Park High School German students earned recognitions for their high scores on the National German Exams. Seven students earned gold awards for scoring at the ninetieth percentile or higher. Congratulations to gold award winners Brandon Troesch, Ryan Fob, Ethan Tabler, Jacob Cunningham, and Noah Voskam, who captured five of the top ten scores out of the one hundred and twenty Western Pennsylvania and West Virginia students who took the Level Four exam. Brendan scored at the ninety-ninth percentile, making him the top scorer in the region, also earning gold awards on the Level Three exam where Jerry Vargis and Sonia Haberstree. As gold award winners, these students are now able to compete for scholarships to travel and study in Germany this summer. Congratulations to all of the high scorers on the National German Exams. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Max Heller its January Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding contributions to school and/or community. Max was recognized for his work with the New Student Orientation and Eighth Grade Move-Up Day programs at the high school. Congratulations, Max. Fifteen Bethel Park High School students in Brad Schutzstutzky's Computer Integrated Manufacturing class did a great job presenting their projects to the owners of E-Fab Corporation at an event that was held at the Cal U Center for Innovation at South Point. As reported last month, our students joined a group of students from Upper St. Clair High School to research seven real-world problems that the E-Fab Corporation needs addressed. For the past two months, all our students researched their problem, developed a solution, and then presented their findings at Cal U. Projects our students worked on included developing an app that would allow the company's customers to easily visualize data about the properties of specific circuits and panels, designing a rigging system and protocol that would allow panels to be rotated safely during the manufacturing process, developing a plan to optimize the workflow for the manufacturing process, developing a virtual reality experience for potential and current customers that would allow them to see the engineering and manufacturing facilities. The students eagerly embraced the challenge of trying to provide viable solutions to real-world problems, and even when their recommendations fell a bit short, it was a great learning experience for them to understand that not every concept hits the mark the first time. We are greatly appreciative of the support and opportunity that E-Fab Corporation provided our students, and we look forward to continuing this partnership with them in the future. For the third consecutive year, our high school biology students continued their partnership with researchers from the University of Pittsburgh's Cancer Institute. The lab involved extracting DNA from snack foods, magnifying the DNA by a procedure called PCR to make over a million copies, then separating the DNA by sequence through gel electrophoresis to determine if the food contained genetically-modified plant materials, better known as GMOs. The lab helped students to learn more about careers and techniques in the STEM field. Students were also encouraged to apply to Pitt's Summer Internship Program. This partnership was made possible through relationships that biology teacher Barb Isel has established with Pitt over the years. Our next few items reflect the accomplishments of our music students, who have been selected to perform in several of the upcoming PMEA events. Three Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and have been selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Region Orchestra Concert, which will be held in March. Congratulations to Emily Cowser, Ethan Tabler, and Janelle Wu. Fourteen Bethel Park High School vocalists will proudly represent their school at the PMEA Region Chorus Concert, which will be held this Friday. Congratulations to Adrian Slatter, Michaela Eisenberg, Natalio Ankoviak, Tyler Petrosi, Jeff McCain, Jerry Vargis, Cam Silman, Sebastian Lees, Anthony Lichetti, J.D. Majors, Daniel Cedar Franzak, Patrick McCall, Garrett Hoffman, and Brian Pauley. Four Bethel Park High School students have been selected to play in the PMEA Region Band Concert, which will be held in March. Congratulations to Cheyenne Myers, Joe Musser, Bruce Deal, and Tyler Petrosi. Independence Middle School musicians Zach Bradford, Jonathan Einoff, Noah James, Emma Strickland, and Olivia Tabler will play in the PMEA Junior High School District Band Concert, which will be held in March. Congratulations to all of these students. Congratulations to Independence Middle School musicians Abigail Phillips and Zoe Knight, who were selected to perform in the PMEA Junior High District Orchestra, which will be held in April. Five Neil Armstrong Middle School musicians have been selected to perform in the PMEA Elementary Music District Band Fest West, which will be held in May. Representing NAMs in the event will be Cody Hydrick-Bondra, Addison Hill, Grace Passios, Rebecca Topper, and Lucas Varley. Congratulations to these students. Four Neil Armstrong Middle School musicians have been selected to perform in the PMEA Elementary Music District Band Fest West, which will be held in May. Representing NAMs in the event will be Cody Hydrick-Bondra, Addison Hill, Grace Passios, Rebecca Topper, and Lucas Varley. Congratulations to these students. Four Neil Armstrong Middle School musicians have been selected to perform in the PMEA Elementary District String Fest, which will be held in March. Congratulations to Jeremy Blocklin, Megan Seaman, Samantha Wolf, and Jacob Zemenski. Neil Armstrong Middle School students Lila McPherson and David Sheltman will perform in the PMEA Elementary District Sing Fest, which will be held in March. Congratulations. Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth grader Mason Kernan finished in second place out of eight hundred and ninety-seven Allegheny County elementary and middle school students, representing eighteen different schools in the Allegheny County Some Dog Math Contest. Some Dog is a Common Core-aligned math website that presents math concepts through the use of online games. Way to go, Mason! Around the world was the theme of this year's Elementary Gifted Expo, and attendees needed to a passport as they listed to thirty-four presentations from our students, about thirty-three different countries. Students had been working since October on this project, which also included a research paper, the creation of a tri-fold presentation board, and an oral presentation. This event was organized by Elementary Gifted Coordinator Lisi Oost. Since September, Memorial Third Grade students in Tracy Smith's room have been collecting plastic bottle caps to benefit the Pittsburgh-area teen who needs regular kidney dialysis. For every bottle cap collected, the patient earns one free minute of dialysis. The students really embraced the collection, setting up collection sites at their churches, dance studios, and parents' places of work. Since September, the students have collected fifteen thousand bottle caps to help someone they have never met, thanks to everyone who supported this endeavor. Washington fourth graders participated in a literature-based STEAM project through their time in the library with librarian Rebecca Manella. First, the students learned about the Iditarod Dog Sled Race by reading a fiction story called "Akeak." They used nonfiction resources in the library, including the online World Book Encyclopedia, to learn more about this annual race. After completing the research component of the project, the students had the opportunity to become members of the adventure crew and were responsible for making a ride attraction that used the force of gravity to bring the rider, in this case, a marble, down to the ground. The students had to use recyclable materials to create their rides and attractions. They also named their ride and created a short promotional advertisement for it. Franklin third-grade teacher Lindsay Crowley has been named one of the thirty-three semifinalists for the 2018 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Crowley joins a long and growing list of Bethel Park teachers who have been named either finalist or semifinalist in this prestigious program since 2008. She will find out later in the spring if she is among the twelve finalists for this award, which will be presented in December. Congratulations, Mrs. Crowley, on this well-deserved recognition. Neil Armstrong Middle School instrumental music teacher Rachel Skalone has been selected to receive the Citation of Excellence from the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District One, which includes all schools in Allegheny, Washington, Westmoreland, Green, and Fayette Counties. Each year, each PMEA district selects the one teacher who is worthy of this recognition. Congratulations to Mrs. Skalone. Bethel Park High School will stage "Shrek: The Musical" at this year's musical offering Wednesday through Saturday, March fifteenth through the eighteenth, at 7:30 p.m. in the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. All tickets are ten dollars. You are invited to come out and enjoy this musical, which is based on the popular movie that includes all of the beloved characters from the movie. Over a hundred and fifty students are involved in the cast and crew, and they are working hard to present another show that is worthy of the great Bethel Park High School. to become members of the adventure crew and were responsible for making a ride attraction that used the force of gravity to bring the rider, in this case, a marble, down to the ground. The students had to use recyclable materials to create their rides and attractions. They also named their ride and created a short promotional advertisement for it. Franklin third-grade teacher Lindsey Crowley has been named one of the thirty-three semifinalists for the two thousand and eighteen Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Crowley joins a long and growing list of Bethel Park teachers who have been named either finalist or semifinalist in this prestigious program since two thousand and eight. She will find out later in the spring if she is among the twelve finalists for this award, which will be presented in December. Congratulations, Mrs. Crowley, on this well-deserved recognition. Neil Armstrong Middle School instrumental music teacher Rachel Skalone has been selected to receive the Citation of Excellence from the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's District One, which includes all schools in Allegheny, Washington, Westmoreland, Green, and Fayette Counties. Each year, each PMEA district selects the one teacher who is worthy of this recognition. Congratulations to Mrs. Skalone. Bethel Park High School will stage "Shrek: The Musical" at this year's musical offering Wednesday through Saturday, March fifteenth through the eighteenth, at seven-thirty P.M. in the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. All tickets are ten dollars. You are invited to come out and enjoy this musical, which is based on the popular movie that includes all of the beloved characters from the movie. Over a hundred and fifty students are involved in the cast and crew, and they are working hard to present another show that is worthy of the great Bethel Park High School's school musical tradition. We hope you will join them for this wonderful, funny production that proves that there's more to the story than meets the eyes and the ears. Break a leg, cast and crew, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody from student government. They were probably at the girls' basketball game, right? Anybody from PTA, PTO Council?
My name is Dawn Hughes, and I am the president of George Washington Elementary and also the co-PTO Council President. So first up, I have Abraham Lincoln, PTO. On February third, Lincoln held their annual talent show. The students performed for the school during the afternoon and then had evening performances with their families in attendance. On February ninth, Lincoln's students welcomed the Sadeki puppets for an assembly. Training with the Lincoln loggers began on Friday, February tenth, and will run until Friday, May fifth. Students will walk-run on their lunch recess on Fridays to prepare for the kids' marathon scheduled for Saturday, May sixth. February fourteenth, class Valentine's Day parties went on as usual. With the help of the PTO parent volunteers, the students spent the afternoon playing games, doing crafts, and exchanging Valentine's. Lincoln's annual bowling party at Legacy Lanes, which was traditionally been held on Martin Luther King Day, was made up on President's Day. February seventeenth was Lincoln's annual snowball. This event is for Lincoln girls to attend with their fathers, grandfathers, or uncles, and dress up and dance, as well as other fun activities. The PTO and Lincoln's gym teacher, Mr. Shaw, sponsored a fundraiser for the Jump Rope for Heart campaign. Thank you to the ninety students who raised five thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars for the American Heart Association. Lincoln's Spring Saris Candy fundraiser is underway. And Lincoln's next PTO-sponsored event will be the Family Bingo Fun Night on March tenth in Lincoln's cafeteria from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and will include cash prizes, raffles, concessions, store prizes, and much more. Ben Franklin Elementary just kicked off their fifth annual Read-A-Thon with a book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble. The PTO loves seeing the kids get so excited about reading. Franklin also helped the American Heart Association raise over two thousand dollars during their annual Jump Rope for Heart Health. Franklin has also begun planning for their Family Fun Night and Kid Painting Class to be held in March. Memorial Elementary. Memorial held their Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair on January twenty-first, which had a great turnout. They had an author that was a nineteen-eighty-one Bethel Park alum that participated in the event, reading and signing his book that day. Memorial's Read-A-Thon ended on March sixth, which resulted in the top readers getting a lunch with Principal Chalice. Classroom holiday parties were held on February fourteenth. Kindergarten registration was held on February sixteenth. The Student Store was held on February tenth, with another one coming up March tenth. The funds raised from the Student Store continue to benefit the fourth-grade activities that take place each month. The fourth graders just held a roller skating party for their class last week. The Science and Art Expo Fair takes place this evening, the twenty-eighth. The kids are always so excited to show off their work. The Spelling Bee preliminaries were held in February in preparation for the annual fourth-grade spelling bee, which will take place March fifteenth. Also on the evening of March fifteenth, Memorial will hold a Spirit Night at Chick-fil-A. The kids are also continuing to practice for the talent show, which will take place March thirty-first. And beginning in March, Memorial movers will start in preparation for the kids' race in May. William Penn. Valentine's Day was celebrated with classroom parties that include games and activities planned for the children by parent volunteers. William Penn hosted their first family game night. The event was well-attended. Families put the electronics down and were able to demo board games sent to William Penn by Game Right. Everyone had a great time. William Penn held their annual Science and Art Fair. Mad Science came to entertain and teach the children about science by demonstrating experiments. They also had an artist present to do character of the children. The Pittsburgh Zoo visited William Penn to teach the students about the rainforest and the animals that were found in the rainforest. They brought a macaw, a ball python, and a porcupine. The students enjoyed having the opportunity to see the animals up close. William Penn just wrapped up their Easter Saris Candy Sale, which benefits the Rosemary Gaynor Scholarship. The scholarship is awarded to a high school senior who attended William Penn. George Washington. Celebrated Washington Day on Friday, February twentieth. The Fort Pitt Museum came and did a presentation about George Washington and his time in Pittsburgh for all the kids. The students of George Washington once again participated in a Jump Rope for Heart program, raising funds for the American Heart Association. The Jump Rope for Heart program was held last Thursday, February twenty-third. The students and staff will be treated to a presentation from the Holy Trinity High Flyer Jump Team this Friday in appreciation for all their donations to a great cause. I think we were about three thousand at last count, so, pretty good. George Washington's accelerated reading program has begun. This year, the students have been asked to take the Ten Book Challenge by reading and passing AR quizzes on ten AR books at or above the child's indicated book level. In addition, and completely optional, components of AR includes having students complete a reading bingo board at home, and the prize is getting to silly string, Mr. Pearson, if they fill the whole thing in. So, there's a lot of incentive this year. The students at George Washington will celebrate Dr. Seuss's Birthday Read Across America Day on Thursday, March second, by wearing outfits to represent their favorite Dr. Seuss book. The Happy Camper Scholastic Book Fair is coming to George Washington next week, and courtesy of the PTO, every student gets a free book. The We Run Club begins its sixth year in March. Students will train for the kids' marathon by exercising, stretching, and running on Tuesdays through April. And the George Washington students are busy preparing their science experience for the Art and Science Fair being held on March tenth at seven P.M. All are welcome to come see the scientists of tomorrow. Over at Neil Armstrong. Because of the supportive parents, the NAMSS PTO was able to afford to pay for a Lego wall for the students. The massive eight-by-eight wall is now located in the library. The NAMSS PTO was also able to pay for a Parent Technology Night on March twenty-second at six-thirty P.M. The Assembly will guide parents in understanding computer, cellphone, and social media misuse. And at IMS, they're proud to announce that their library furniture fundraiser at Level Twenty made nearly two thousand dollars. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for consistently coming and reporting, because it's always wonderful to hear all the good things that are happening out there, and we appreciate it tremendously. Solicitor's report?
I'm having other than what we discussed in the next address.
Thank you. Public comments on agenda items. Agenda items only.
Wendy Yantek, one-two-two-five Tidewood Drive. As a nurse and a mother of three children in Bethel Park School District, I strongly believe in the continuity of health care in a school setting. Continuity of health care is the quality of care that is provided in a consistent manner over time in cooperation with a team to ensure that the mental, physical, emotional well-being of an individual is being met. The continuity of care in a school setting involves communication of vital information to ensure that all those involved in the care of a student are on the same page. It is necessary in order to identify problems that may be limiting a child's ability to learn or attend school regularly. It also builds trust with a student and his or her family, and trust is essential in order to establish interventions that may be otherwise delayed. Trust allows students to feel comfortable expressing their needs or concerns. A lack of the continuity of care in a school setting may be detrimental to students, especially those who are medically fragile. Before additional changes are made to the health office staff, I ask you all to take into consideration your own experiences and think about how you would feel if your child or loved one was cared for by a different person every day, or you never knew who that caregiver was going to be. Wouldn't you rest easier and be reassured knowing that they were cared for by a familiar face, someone able to participate and anticipate their needs, and recognize the potential problems in order to maintain their health, safety, and overall well-being?
Anyone else? I move into business items, then. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening under curriculum. Would any like any held out? Hearing none. I move under curriculum, number one, the school-sponsored overnight educational activities; two, professional development; and three, Carnegie Mellon University partnership in mathematics.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through three, under Curriculum Committee, have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are seventeen items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
Number nine and seventeen, please.
I move item one, approval of substitute; two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program; three, approval of extra-duty responsibility; four, acceptance of resignation; five, approval of sabbatical leave of absence; six, appointment of personnel; seven, approval of leave of absence; eight, approval of contract; ten, approval to close position; eleven, approval to close position; twelve, approval to open position; and thirteen, appointment to position; fourteen, approval of Board Secretary; fifteen...
Can I stop you there? Can you fill that in with the name on number fifteen?
On number fifteen?
Yes.
Approval of Board Treasurer, Sharon Copie.
Thank you.
Okay, for the...to be effective March second, to fill the vacancy through June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
And sixteen, approval of Title IX Compliance Officer.
Second.
Second. Thank you. I didn't know who that...I couldn't tell which voice that is. Items one through eight and ten through sixteen, under Personnel, have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item nine, acceptance of resignation of the assistant to the superintendent, Finance and Operations.
Second.
Item nine, under Personnel, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
I just want to take the time to thank Matt Howard for the service that he's given to this district. You were here when I was a teacher, and I just think you've done a tremendous job, and I want to thank you.
We wish you well.
I also wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Howard. In my first year, he's served as an excellent resource, helped me with a lot of items, including negotiations and some building projects that he was able to finish up. I wish him the best of luck in his new endeavor, and I appreciate your support and help this past year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven to zero.
I move item seventeen, approval of staffing changes.
Item number seventeen, under Personnel Committee, has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Christiansen. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
That item carries six to one. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing two items under Facility and Services this evening, would anyone like any of the items held out separately? Hearing none, I will move the following two items. Item number one, awarding of the electrical panel and transfer switch bid; and item number two, the approval of purchase of building control system for the Ben Franklin Elementary School project.
Items one and two, under Facilities and Services Committee, have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on either of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Spicuzza, would you continue that one for me?
Yeah, I could write a lot faster than I can type, so...
Me too. I'm having trouble tonight, too.
Bear with me one second. Mrs. Cook, there are seven items tonight under Finance Committee. Would anyone like any of them held out separately?
Number seven, please.
Number seven. I move the following six items. Item number one is the two thousand seventeen salaries and bills. Item number two is the two thousand seventeen January financial report. Item number three is budgetary transfers. Item number four is acceptance of the auditor's report for the year ending June thirtieth, 2016. Item number five, National School Launch Program Agreement. And item number six, item declared unused and unnecessary.
Second.
Items one through six, under Finance, have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. Mr. Spicuzza.
Item number seven. I move item number seven, Taxes, Assumptions, Appeals Program.
Item number seven has been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item?
I would just ask this solicitor to do a brief explanation of this, illustrating that it's not going to really change much, as we understand it.
This is a revision of the current program, but it shouldn't result in much of a difference. Your prior solicitor, the prior appeals, were based on a fifty thousand dollar difference between a sale of a property and the fair market value of that property. However, the county applies a common-level ratio to properties when they're determining what the fair market value of that property is. So, the revision is just to have our office apply that common-level ratio before we look at the difference in the sale price and the fair market value. And if, after applying that common-level ratio, there's a twenty thousand dollar difference, then we would appeal...are authorized to appeal the property.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions or comments on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries seven to zero. Mr. Means, I think you're just doing some second reading.
Yeah, there are two items under Policy. One is the approval of Policy, the second of three readings, number two fifty-five, Educational Stability for Children in Foster Care. And item number two, Policy Revisions, again, the second of three readings, Policy two fifty-one, Homeless Students, and Policy nine fifteen, Booster Organizations. And these are available to look at online.
Correct. Would you continue, then, and take Other for me this evening?
Okay, Other, there are two items under Other. One is student agreements, and two are board meetings. Would anybody like either of these withheld? Then I move that number one, the student agreements, and number two, the board meeting calendar, be adopted.
Second. Who was that, Mrs. Buckley? I was having trouble hearing those two. Items one and two, under Other, have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on either of these? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Those items carry seven to zero. We are now to the point of public comments, and public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is John Oaks, eight sixty-one Clifton Road. This is in regards to my son, John Oaks, Jr. He's a special-needs student that receives transportation from Bethel Park for the School for the Blind. We've had some...I'd like to try to streamline the process. We've had some issues with different school nurses being applied to taking him to the...on the bus ride for the School for the Blind, and occasionally we'll have an aide. We've had some absentees with the school nurses, being that if someone's absent or needed somewhere else, they definitely need to stay at the school, and they can't be at our disposal. So, the problem becomes is there's not a good communication between the school bus company, the school nurses, and ourselves. company, the school nurses, and ourselves. So, sometimes my wife has to take my son on the bus ride more than five, six, seven times in the past month and a half, which is not a huge problem, but I'd like to streamline this process, so maybe there's, you know, more, more of the same nurses that we know, or maybe a better, excuse me, better communication, so we can find out, so this moves a lot smoother. The nurses have done a great job. It's just, they're needed at the schools more than they are, you know, on the bus, and we'd like to streamline it so my son has proper care every day. That's pretty much the, I thank you for your time and any considerations, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And that would certainly be our mission as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I will move into Board Comments, and Mrs. Dobus?
Just generally, I'd like to thank the parents, coaches, staff, and students for helping to make this such a wonderful district, and I'd like to thank the booster organizations for working with us on this revision of this policy that is still under reading, but I think it was a good opportunity for us to work with the citizens and the parents in Bethel Park to try to come to some kind of a compromise, so I'd like to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Means.
As usual, it's always nice to see all the accomplishments by the students, and in addition to that, I'd like to make the comment that the workings of the school district are dynamic, you know? Students are identified that need remediation work or with special needs. Sometimes personnel have to be added and moved around in order to accomplish these needs, so we do the very best that we can, and we're restricted sometimes in the flexibility we have to do these, but we do the best we can.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I also would like to comment about the staff report and the PTA, PTO report this evening. It acknowledges the many, many accomplishments of both our students and staff, the academics, the arts, and so many different projects that benefit others, and I personally am very proud to sit here and listen to all the things and the efforts of so many people working together. I'd also like to thank the people who were involved with the Bethel Park Grade Alumni Hall of Fame. This was held in January, but it was after our last meeting, and it was a very nice evening, and many people worked hard with that. And then lastly, for those of you who don't know, Mrs. Cook and I serve on the board at the Pathfinder School, and we meet there once a month and spend a lot of time with some very special projects there, and so I'd like everyone to mark their calendars for Saturday, April twenty-ninth, from eleven AM until three PM, there'll be a special needs fair and expo. And this information will be available online, and there's a lot of activities for the children and also for the parents to meet the different people involved in doing what's best for children. So I just want to make sure that the word's out. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call.
What time is that?
It is from eleven AM to three PM, Saturday, April twenty-ninth, ninth, at the Pathfinder School. And this is the second year. I went for the first time last year, and it was amazing, all that they did. And also, lastly, I'd like to acknowledge that we have two scouts in the audience with Mr. Zonizer, and nice to see you here, gentlemen, and good luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spicuzzo.
Oh, sorry, I took it. He's one of my kids.
You beat me to it.
He's one of my kids. I couldn't, I couldn't...
I was trying to find something different to say.
Sorry.
It's really difficult, and I feel for you, Barry.
Just say ditto, Barry.
Yeah, I got something. I will, I concur with what my fellow board members have said. It's always great to hear the reports and see all the great accomplishments that we couldn't achieve without everyone's help from the top to the bottom and everyone in between, just do a great job, and thank you very much for that. Matt, thank you so much. Appreciate everything you've done. I've learned some things from you about construction, some things I didn't want to learn from you, but thank you for that, and good luck in the future. And you know where we live, so come back. I like to commend Janet, because I at one time announced high school soccer games here in Bethel Park, and I know how difficult it is for me, and it's just a tremendous effort every time. Thank you.
I see the old print, and I clam up, John Smith, and I'd be like, "Oh, that's my..."
It is tough, it is.
Some people get mad if you mess it up, too.
Well, I had, one of my cousin's sons played soccer for West Smithland, and when he came to Bethel Park, he actually got his name announced correctly.
Correctly.
Yeah, Spicuzzo's not that difficult of a name, but it never gets pronounced correctly. Ask Doctor J about my name.
That's right. Yeah, you're right, yeah. That's why I asked the coach to read the student athletes tonight. Mrs. Rule.
This past month, Steel Center Career Technology Education Center had a dinner in which the students served us, cooked the meal and served us, which was great. They also brought back some of the students who had already left the school and talked about some of the new businesses that they had started and the trades that they've gone into, and it was just so exciting to listen to some of the students and how well they have done. And we have the second highest number of students going to that center, so that says something even for Bethel. So we're providing all students with some career path, whether it's through college or through VOTAC or whatever. They're at least going to get something and be able to have life work. The other thing is that I also attended the AIU, and the AIU has made a big effort this year to look at the budgeting and how they charge all of our schools for the special services they provide. Like, they may send out certain instructors or other types of programs, they have family programs, but they are like an arm to forty-two school districts. We are the largest AIU unit in the state, and therefore, they brought in some specialists, and they worked with a finance committee of superintendents, and they were able to bring in a budget of over, with an increase of only little over two thousand dollars for the year. That is really a first, so they're really making a big effort to keep our prices down here in the school, so that's a good thing. And also, I just want to mention that the Bunny Brunch is coming up, April first, with the DECA students. We usually get around a hundred little ones that come to see the bunny, the Bunny Brunch, so if you just mark that on your calendars, there will be more information out about that. And Matt, wish you well.
Is that held at the high school?
It's held here at the high school. We go out, and we also have a little Easter egg hunt if the weather's nice and do some other things, so...
Thank you, Mr. Christensen.
Yeah, so, most of you have already taken many of the things I was going to say, but I did, I wanted to thank Matt also, and also thank Buzzy, because the auditors reminded us of an interesting statistic finishing up the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year. We came in within fifteen thousand dollars or so of the planned budget. This is out of about an eighty-three million dollar budget, so that's within a point oh one percent accuracy of what we originally estimated, so that's surprisingly well-run.
That's like no wiggle room.
Right.
That's no wiggle room.
Amazing, it really was. You guys did a great job working together.
I just want to thank everyone, from our staff to our audience to our children, for the part they play in making Bethel Park such a great place to live. Thanks, Scouts. I hope you enjoyed the meeting tonight. We didn't carry it on too, too long, did we? I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.